Oh my gosh, I spun around. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to like turn around?
Yeah, a whole turnaround.
Roll call, Mr. Turner.
Mayor Judge.
Here.
Commissioner Meeks.
I'm here.
Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Dogger.
Here.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
All right, I need approval of minutes held on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. So moved. Leslie Hipsher, Ag Days. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me. I have a schedule that I'll hand out to everyone. And Ag is approaching, I think we're what, three and a half weeks out? So, um, as you all know, we were not able to have our normal event in twenty twenty. So we anticipate a really good year this year. Just with the women's shakeup booth alone, we were about a third of our normal income. So we're hoping this year we're able to do everything accordingly. The state of Illinois is inspecting rides. And so that's good news, that's what prevented us from doing any of that last year. Uh, the amusement company is taking extra precautionary measures. They are able to disinfect in between riders and have more sanitation stations. And we partnered with Wabash General Hospital last year to purchase a hand washing station. So we have that uptown for any public to use as well. And then the sanitation company also brings a hand washing station. So we've kind of worked through some of the concerns and things that people have had about this type of event. The one major thing that we have came about is, most of you know, not just in our region, not just in our state, but all across America, we're having a lot, a hard time hiring employees. And that is especially hard with the carnival companies as they are seasonal work, uh, they put in long hours, um, harsh conditions sometimes. So they're having a hard time hiring enough employees to do their normal setups and tear deals. Uh, with that being said, normally, we request the street closure, um, middle of the day on a Tuesday. And they are requesting that we ask for a end of the business day on Monday's street closure for this year.
Okay.
So, um, normally, they put up like fifteen, or they put up twenty rides in Gibson and Vandenberg County, they're the larger carnivals. And they only have enough to put up fifteen rides this year in those communities because they have a short come with employees. So, um, my thoughts on it are to wait until probably six P M. on Monday. And then to keep the intersection cross traffic at Fourth Street open, per my diagram. So people can still get where they need to go, but then they would have to park along here or here to, to walk down the street a little bit. But that would help quite a bit with the flow of things.
Uh, leave Four, leave Four Street open the whole time or just up until Wednesday?
Up until, you know, Tuesday night.
Tuesday night.
Then we'd have to set the right, the normal stuff in there on Tuesday.
Okay.
After business hours, basically. The intersection at Fifth Street, closest to the post office, would remain open.
Mm-hmm.
So, and in past years, I've spoke with the, um, first mid-bank and they have never had a problem. Um, as far as the branch managers and the employees there, they're very easy to work with.
Of course.
I think that would be, you know, a concern for, for people that they are always really finding, um, accommodating.
Okay.
Um, the people that don't like it the most is like FedEx, U P S. But it's, it's just a few days, so. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
No.
Sound good to everybody?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, well, we'll see you in a few weeks.
Best of luck.
Oh, I needed to put a little shout out here, uh, this is my Little Miss Ag Days M C.
Oh, yes.
So Wednesday, seven o'clock, mark your calendar, Mr. Turner will be pageants ready.
Siding staff, let me tell you.
You're gonna wear a sash and everything?
And Leslie?
I don't think I wear the sash, I believe the ones wear the sash.
I think a tuxedo, though.
I'm good.
And the city-
You look good in a sash.
The city commissioner's time at the shakeup booth is Saturday, August seventh, two to four?
I don't do that word as, but I can confirm that.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I have it.
I didn't have a copy of it yet, I don't do that until like the day before.
We have this down too.
When it's crunch time?
Yeah.
On the seventh?
Two to four.
Two to four on the first.
Two to four, okay.
I got all the other stuff to worry about right now, we worry about that right before.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Acme Group, welcome gentlemen.
Thank you. So about a year ago, we brought a city global win with the slogan, Mount Carmel City on the Move. You all accepted it.
Yep.
And then COVID hit.
Yep.
So we basically haven't met till just a little bit ago. And, and we're back, kind of meeting, and, and we're gonna have a community, a little community meeting in a couple of weeks. Uh, the Acme Committee is just a bunch of community minded folks that are here, here to help any way we can make Mount Carmel and Wabash County a better place to live, work, and raise money. So, we have T-shirts for y'all.
All right.
I'll have free T-shirts.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What's going, age of order? Age, or what?
We also-
Size.
I don't think I come to the bottom.
We also have, for your first vehicle, you decide to put decals on.
Okay.
We have the two decals here for that.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Give those to Ryan.
All right, thank you.
And, as one of our projects, we, we'd like to see this logo in, in, on the back of, of every citizen we have and, and every business place that, that we know. And so we made a, if I could turn on, we made a prototype sign that we're, we're getting some, um, pricing from. And so hopefully, one of these days, we'll be able to, to say, hey, you know, if you're a business, you know, we'll, we'll work with retail business folks, whoever, but it'll take, you know, hopefully it'll take to get these signs everywhere we have. This is just a prototype, but it's, it's a double sided.
Oh.
Uh, sign with LEDs around it, and you know, we won't be able to control it and so forth. We, we're working on a size like this, so if it's hanging in a store window and you're, you're driving your car past, you look, you know what you're seeing.
Right.
All right? So that's all we have, we just wanted to thank you all for, for, uh, the logo and the slogan.
Yep.
Uh, we think if we can get this word out, you know, we can help some attitudes and, 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 and just, uh, maybe do some, do some good things.
We're in the midst right now of, um, a new sign for the Public Works Building with the logo on it.
Sure, sure, great.
And we display it up there.
Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Mike.
Beautiful, man.
Is there any way I could tape that up front where the cameras could catch it for the video? How, how long is your extension cord?
Yeah.
Oh, it's long enough.
It's right here.
Yeah.
Just come up here, set front and center.
Now we can plug it in behind us, there you go.
Oh, yeah.
Like I said, this is just a prototype.
I like it. It's huge.
Yeah, I love the color.
Thanks. Well, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Awesome.
Thank you for the shirts.
Well.
Yep.
So how do you know what size to get everybody?
We just guessed. You know, we figured it's free with Jerome's size, you know, the bigs.
My wife shrinks everything anyways, so.
We're live on TV, Tim.
Hot water.
See you guys, thank you guys. Two XL, I'm like, wow, I just sneaked in. Oh, Lord. All right, Mr. Parrot, welcome back. You're up.
Uh, Brooke here, Skytrain Aviation. Uh, I know we've given you guys a lot of stuff in the last few months, information and, uh, stuff to consider. And, uh, asking if you have any questions or concerns to also move forward.
Does anybody got anything?
No.
No questions? Want to bring it to a vote? I mean, do I need, I guess, I guess. To move forward, I need a motion, is what I'm needing.
We did, did, did we, um, I mean, we did have legal review.
Yes.
So I didn't know if they were aware of that or not.
Yeah, we did have legal review. So.
I can give you, uh, if you want, I can give you a quick rundown.
Yeah, please do.
Okay, at this time, break the awkward silence here, uh, at this time, the city's attorney that has been consulted on this wishes to, one of two things, um, not bring it up to a vote or vote on posit, uh, a yes, to allow it to happen, or table the matter for further discussion. There was a few questions he had that, um, he's working on, but it's, it's really up to the council whether they bring it up to vote or not. But at his, at this time, his recommendation was no, to move forward.
What do you guys want to do? You want to go with attorneys?
Well, that's what we pay him for. So you say it was the attorney's advice not to go forward with it, right?
He said that, the attorney stated that he suggested, one, we either table the matter for him to draw up a different contract because of some of the wording that wasn't beneficial towards the city, or two, just not vote on it. But he, he's advised against accepting the contract as is.
So our options are don't, don't vote at all, or table it till further?
Until they, you know, depends on what you guys want to do.
So, so if, if there's questions there that he, um, has on this matter,
then he's, needs to get in touch with.
He said that he needs a few more days to go over everything. There were two large items that he wanted to really address, um, and look further into, with privatizing the, the airport. But at this time, he can't make any recommendations outside of do not move forward with the privatization of the airport.
So did you get the feeling from him that that was not a good deal for the city?
At this, at this point in time, he didn't rule it out permanently, he stated at this time, under review, he could not recommend that the ci- city move forward with it.
Okay.
So it's, it's a, it's a contractual.
It's a contractual language that he had issues with.
Is that what we do? We table it?
Table it for further review by the attorneys to get together and make the decision and?
Absolutely, I, I want everybody to be comfortable.
Right.
So at this point, you don't have to take any.
Okay.
We can move along and not vote.
Okay, just table it for.
Correct.
Attorneys to talk to each other.
Correct, there's no vote, needs to be taken.
Does it have a timeframe or something, cause?
Uh, the attorney, seriously, I talked to him, he got back with me today, or this afternoon, after he reviewed, um, he's not a normal attorney, as you know, but he's, was that, and he was out of town, but he's reviewed it and he's reviewed the deed. One of the concerns is, um, the federal government coming back in and taking the property from the city of Mount Carmel. That's one of the biggest guarantees, is if something would violate the original terms set forth by the federal government, they can come in and take our airport and then the city of Mount Carmel will no longer have an airport. So that was one of the big hangups.
Okay.
So, and, and as it is, it's set up as an L L C, which, you know, that's the limited liability portion of it is concerning too. So those are some of the issues, maybe, um, I'll be more than happy to tell your attorney who, who we're speaking with after we leave and he can reach out to him.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's what we got for you, that's, like I said, all this came to today, so the attorney that we, um, contracted on this was out on vacation and when we called him today, he's like, well, I need a couple more days, and it's like, nope, we need an opinion now. So that's where we're at.
I understand.
Okay, so we move to table?
Yes, table it, I'll make a motion. Did I take a motion?
No.
Okay.
No motion, just table.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. Terry Boyer, Donahue and Associates.
So Terry, you want to come on up?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I was just gonna give a quick update on the water treatment plant and where we're at with it for progress and next steps. So our design plans are basically done. Uh, we will send a set of drawings and specs to the city here, probably later this week.
Sweet.
Um, and then next week, just go over any kind of final details. And the goal is to go out to bid and advertise on, uh, July twenty-ninth. So we did send in for permitting way back in February, which every week Andrew's calling the permit reviewer and every week we're getting, oh yeah, it's on my desk, I'll get that out to you here, uh, this afternoon. So, and then we wait another few days and don't see it. So we're hoping that as we publish our schedule to them, that they're gonna get more serious about giving us the permit. But, I mean, in all reality, we just need the permit before we start construction.
I mean, I, I will say that even with what you consider a delay, we're still on the exact time schedule as you put out a couple of years ago, so.
So the bidding process will take us into the middle part of all, takes us about six to eight weeks to get through that. Then they have to close the, the loan, so that takes a bit of time as well. Did you mention something? You waved at me. Oh, okay.
Hey, I di- I didn't see him back there at first.
Yeah. He hid, he hid.
He's hiding.
Who, who does the permitting, is it I E P A?
Yeah, I E P A does the permitting. So realistically, the hope is to have the notes to proceed to the contractor in, uh, January. So we're looking at eighteen months constructions, that puts us in the middle of twenty twenty-three, have the new water treatment plant up and running. And then we'll figure out some transitional, operational period between the old and the new plant. And then we'll start the tear down on the old plant, you know, after that. So that's kind of, just want to give you a quick five minute summary, you know, on that. And that's really all I wanted to bring up on the water treatment plant, unless there's any questions.
We're looking at probably March of next year, tearing down the Hind Street Reservoir. Is that the timeframe you're still kind of looking at?
Um, March of next year, we'll start building, yes, yeah, you're about right, yeah.
All right. That just gives us?
Yeah, that, that's about right, by the time the contractor gets started and mobile.
Being the first thing, it'll be gone, so.
You need to get some stuff out of there.
Yeah.
Do we need to discuss, I don't see it on here, the, um, how the I E P A wants us to separate the three I Design Donahue? Do we need to discuss that in, in meeting, or does that just need to be done? I don't know.
I, I can summarize if you can real quick.
Yeah, if you can.
It can manage, you guys approved a contract for construction phase services in our original agreement where we had with, uh, design. Uh, we had three I Design as a sub to us. Because of how I E P A looks at the, the construction phase services contract, any subcontractor, they want to go through a, a D B E process. Um, so in order to mitigate that, they typically let us just have two separate contracts. So we're just asking the city to kind of avoid that other contract and then execute the two contracts, the three I Design separately to the city and Donahue separately to the city.
But the contracts are the same, if you're?
The same amount, yeah, it's the same total amount, we just split it, you know, how it's appropriate. They'll be doing a lot of the onsite, um, field observation, they're a lot closer, have closer personnel, they did a lot of the, uh, civil and structural design, so it makes sense for them to watch that part of it.
Okay, very good. Shouldn't be an issue.
Thank you, Terry.
Anything for me to write down?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Dave Dallas, update on roads projects.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, last Thursday, we, uh, received bids for a rain bid for the oil and chip portion of our summer maintenance program, street program. Um, we received a bid from Mount Carmel Stabilization Group. There were four items on it, the prime lawyer, seal lawyer, aggregate, and your folks, see. Uh, the estimate was seventy-six thousand nine hundred dollars. The bid was seventy-two thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. So it's about four thousand dollars under the estimate. I would just like to ask the council, Tom and the council, make a motion to accept those bids for that work.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. So ground.
I believe David has been, maybe already doing some schedule on wanting to stabilize.
Yeah, I know our crew's been out patching and then getting the roads ready for the, uh, summer road maintenance, so that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Um, if anyone is interested in being a lifeguard, we are having certi- certification class this Wednesday night at the Mount Carmel City Pool at five thirty. Um, hopefully, uh, I know we've gotten four or five that we've spoke to, but if somebody's out there would like to show up, please come out and they will see if they can get you certified. Uh, we're working with a new certification, uh, lady out of Evansville, who actually used to be a lifeguard at the W V C pool.
Kathy?
Huh? Lisa, or not Lisa, um, Kelly Tenenbarch, was Kelly Wells?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the swim coach's daughter.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, so, um, anyways, she's excited about helping us out and getting us some more lifeguards. The Mount Carmel City Pool is now open seven days a week from twelve thirty to five P M. daily. And our last day of operations this year is August eighth, which is a Sunday. The dog swim is August ninth, which is a Monday, and it is to support the Wabash County Animal Shelter. So come on out with your dog, or cat if you wish, and, um, enjoy the evening out there at the city pool for a good cause. And, uh, they'll be, uh, selling some hot dogs and some other things, I believe, so.
I want to see a swimming cat.
I think some people would like your cats to go out there, just.
Yeah.
That wouldn't end well.
That would not end well, all right. All right, so, uh, this past week, um, city manager Turner and I have been talking with a property owner over in the South Chandler area. It is, uh, where a lot of our utility easements are at. And it's basically a, a big area, it's fifteen building lots that, um, we would like to get council's approval on tonight. And thinking, it's already been platted, it's off of Chandler Avenue, and I can't believe the, remember the other road back there.
Chandler Kirkman?
Kirkman. And, um, so anyways, the reason I feel that we need this property, one, is because we have a lot of utility easements. And in the past, we've had to pay basically a royalty to go back in the area and work on water and sewer lines. And also, this could move into what we would like to do, some economic development with Toyota and all the expansion that they are currently doing. They'll be putting in the two new S U V lines in the near future. We can take the fifteen buildable lots and work with individuals on, uh, the making the lots very, very affordable if they would build a new house on them. So anyways, the purchase price is for forty-seven thousand dollars, and so I would like a, a motion for the forty-seven for the property.
And it's coming out TIF funds.
And it's coming out of TIF funds.
I'll make the motion.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, so moved, thank you, guys. I think this is a great investment for the city and to basically, uh, use the TIF funds for one of the things that is, um, very nice to be able to do for the community. All right, Oak Street Project, uh, Mr. Dallas is talking about projects. We spoke with the attorneys from Norfolk Southern today. After months and months and months of crickets on their end, I've been told that they are going to have the contract to us by this Friday to move forward with the sidewalk project on Oak Street. So something that, uh, we've been wanting to do this council for several years now. So hopefully, uh, by the end of the year, we'll have some progress out there on Oak Street. That is my report. Commissioner Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. Keeps raining, we keep mowing. Uh, cleaned intakes. Like I said before, if people would not mind helping us out with the intakes. You have one in front of your house on the street corner, see a bunch of debris on it? Wouldn't hurt to rake it off, just helps keep from flooding your driveway or garage. Uh, we started spraying roads to get ready for the chip and seal. Continue to, uh, fill, patch potholes. Uh, the road that goes to our water wells over the levee was, I don't know, how bad, David?
Oh, real bad.
Yeah, real many loads, how many loads did we put on it?
We put ten down there just to fill holes. And that doesn't even count once you get over the, the levee.
Okay, so spread a bunch of millings, asphalt millings on there, built up access road to the sanitary sewer with millings. Uh, replaced burnt out signal lights in Ninth and Market and Ninth and Walnut. Worked on extending the field tile drain under the pickleball courts across the road, we had a big mud hole there, guys, it was, I guess when they built the pickleball court, they severed the water line that goes to the irrigation system to the new, the front side of the golf course. Wasn't plugged off, so therefore it was letting water seep into that line, it came under the road and, uh, created a big mud hole by one of our little shelter houses there. So we put a drain line in, dug a deep hole, was calm, put a bunch of rock in it, solved the problem from what I can see. Uh, we helped the water maintenance with the water main break, ordered material and built new chain guides for the Influent. That's your department, Dogger, Influent?
Uh, I keep, keep.
Is that right, Influent?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Keep, uh, keep my report, man.
At the sewer plant, we keep doing your work for you, man. Repaired the rear tire on the arm mower, replaced two tires with part department John Deere mower. Replaced the guide wheel assembly on the tail end of a bush hog. Put barricades out for the Fourth of July parade and picked them up after the parade. Put out no parking signs for the fireworks along River Road. Taped off no parking area by the parking lot. Took barricades down and cone to the four-eight center for Rotary Club to use for corn day. And we marked raised areas to be milled off Park Road, College Drive, and Mulberry Street, I'm sure y'all have seen those. If you hit those in a pickup truck, the back end just about comes off the ground. So we're gonna have stabilization grind those down for us. So that's the end of my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Meeks, Commissioner Ike Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor, um, current general fund stands at a little over one point seven million. Uh, a few other accounts I thought I'd mentioned, we haven't talked about in a while, recreation fund, forty-one thousand, garbage funds a hundred and seventy-six thousand and change. And our capital improvement fund, uh, which sometimes we have to get into for some equipment and things, uh, is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand at the moment. So overall, things are pretty, pretty steady, um, we're holding our own, our balances are staying pretty strong. Um, and other than that, the, uh, the holiday fish fry at the senior citizens, uh, went very well. Uh, got a lot of good feedback from people. I was, with it being carryout only, I was a little concerned that it might get, uh, soggy when it went home. But I talked to people, several people that took it, well, actually, one went all the way, went to Allen Dale and, um, said it was delicious when they got there. So, um, I think, uh, all that came out for that was Mayor Judge and Mr. Easter getting it all set up. So that is my report.
Well, you and Dave did a majority of the fish frying, so it's hard to do it when you can't do your act again, so. But, um, on the financial side, I want to add to Commissioner Ike Meyer's fund. The, um, American Revitalization Fund the federal government has put out there, the state of Illinois still has not accepted those funds. And the counties got their funds from, directly from the federal government. But all the municipalities, under fifty thousand people, have not received any of those funds yet. And only thing I'm asking is, if anybody knows anybody up at the state, I'll be up there next week and the week after. The governor and D C E O and E D A need to accept these funds in. Those funds could help out, you know, a lot of different things, not only in our community, but every other municipality in our area. And a lot of other municipalities are not sitting as financially sound as we are. And they could desperately use that money. We have plans for that money, um, to improve our situation, but the state of Illinois just needs to accept the funds and not have any hand in changing the, uh, the rules other than handing it out to us. That is just my opinion on it, so anyways, sorry. You, when you started going on stuff about how we were doing, it hit me that we still haven't.
It's a lot of money hanging out.
Wabash County, the county got their funds, uh, or half of them, they'll get the other half next year. But it's frustrating that we don't get ours yet, so. Commissioner Dogger?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, water plant had a chemical pump go down, um, which feeds chemical for the entire town. So Keith was able to- So Keith was able to take it apart and put it and fix it, but we have a new one on the way for tomorrow. That's a very key piece of our drinkable water for the community. So, everything's okay there, but just wanted to let people know that that's just, kind of goes on to like, why we're going down this path with the new water plant and stuff. So, it'll be all good by tomorrow morning. As Terry said, bids will be released by the end of the month. We're still on schedule for the water plant, which is, which is awesome. Hopefully, it'll stay that way, maybe even be early.
I won't promise that.
And Mick has started a separate line item, which is public information with the water plant fee. When we raise people's water rates, the first increase was six seventy-five, and it'll go up over the next four or five years. But right now, it's getting dumped into an account and that balance is at sixty-three thousand. Just to let people know that that's there, it can only be spent on the water plant, that's what we promised you, that's what's gonna happen. Maintenance Department, I think I'm good, I think Tom covered all of it, which is gonna happen a lot with the, kind of a public works style of work here. So, the only thing I will say is they fixed that city park issue on the Fourth of July weekend, which really sucks. So, they were away from their family during the holiday, so we appreciate them doing that. Sewer Department, you want to speak briefly on this? Donahue is something for the council to approve. And the city have talked about a twenty-year capital improvement plan for the sewer plant. We just did three and a half million dollars worth of upgrades at the sewer plant. That was not everything that needed to be done, and over the next twenty years with EPA regulations and requests that are already starting to come out, we need to get a handle on kind of what the city's gonna need to be prepared for from today, twenty years from now.
Yeah, so some of the critical items at the wastewater plant and being out there with Josh and looking at things are the screwed lift pumps that lift into the hydration tanks. That's the only way of lifting in, those are heavily maintenance, you know, burdensome items, and if you need to repair them, you gotta lift them out and get to bearings and that kind of thing. So, there are a number of items like that with the flooding at the lower end of the plant, with the Mulberry Street lift station. You're having significant issues that we, I think we got resolved in the hydraulic study we did recently, at least temporarily. But the goal of the capital improvement plan is to look at all these major capital improvements and basically get a plan of action, an implementation schedule, and then do the same thing we did for the water treatment plant, which was get it in front of Illinois EPA for approval for a project plan for S.R.
And this isn't for really, this can't, well, it is, but I mean, but it's more for like when we're all gone and other people come in, they really know like what's going on down there and what needs to happen, because things are moving fast with EPA these days and what they're regulating.
Yeah, new regulations are coming your way with phosphorus removal, that's coming down the road. So, we've submitted a couple of reports for the phosphorus study here in the next couple of weeks or so. So, the capital improvement plan puts together the IPA kind of format for the project plan. The goal is we get that started here so we can submit that hopefully September, October to IPA. They're gonna tell us, it takes a year to get through that process. We're fortunate, last time, we had everything done before the end of March, which is the goal. If we get it done by the end of March, then you have some opportunity to make decisions on what's affordable and what can be done going forward for some of the first early action projects. The plan's good for five years, and so we can create a five-year plan, you know, going forward for wastewater improvements to try to spread some of the funding responsibilities out.
So, it was not to exceed twenty-nine thousand three hundred, I think it was. And the sewer fund has a little over half, actually five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in it. So, I mean, we have the money for it, if I can get an approval from council here for them to get started on this, that would be great.
With that tonight?
Yeah, if I can get it tonight.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. I'd rather be proactive than reactive, so it's giddy-go.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign.
Who was that seconded by?
Tom.
Thanks, Terry. Haven't told you thank you in a while.
Alright.
You do every bit of it, man, no doubt.
You're gonna really need it when this project gets going.
Is that your report?
Oh, sorry, yes, end of my report.
Alright, thank you Commissioners, the Dogger. Commissioner Zimmerman?
Um, thank you, Mayor. The fire department had ten total runs in the last couple of weeks. Two of them actually were brush fires, one was a structure fire. The structure fire was last week. The fire department was on scene for around three hours to get that completely out. Allendale, Keansburg, Belmont, Princeton and Owensville assisted with that, responded for mutual aid. They did a great job. One of the things that you don't realize is how hot it actually gets and how quick people get heat exhaustion from it. So those are some of the things that we keep, keep an eye on while we're at the fire, making sure there's plenty of water and Gatorades and things to replenish. So if you see people sitting out, sitting down, it's not because they're being lazy, it's because it's extremely heat or hot, and it was extremely hot that night in addition to the fire. They also had some training, they have another meeting tonight, so they are doing training on, just reviewing the operation of engaging pumps on the trucks, which is very interesting also, so that everybody knows what to do, when to do it. They also did some public service by having the large flag displayed there at Fourth Street during the Fourth of July parade, so we appreciate them doing that also. As for garbage, it's been going as scheduled. The recycling, there was a little confusion, it is open on Saturdays. This past weekend, it was not open because of the Fourth of July weekend. Again, reminder, take all of your recyclables out of the bags before you put them into the bins. And then also for the brush, if you have large piles of brush, don't be discouraged if it doesn't get picked up. They will come back, you know, the next day to pick it up with a backhoe or things like that. So if you do have large brush piles, it will get picked up. It may not get picked up, you know, on that day that you think that it should be, but they still make the rounds on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays. And then our health and safety is, our mosquito spraying is still continuing, so we're trying to combat those mosquitoes that are starting to be out and around. So, end of my report.
Yeah, on the mosquitoes this year, people need to understand, and Commissioner Zimmerman can confirm this, we have spent more on chemical this year combating mosquitoes than we have in a very long, long time. And so Seth Swanson's our new applicator, or Jeff, Justin, sorry, got his brother. Anyways, Justin, and he's done a really good job, and so just be patient, just like days like today, if it's gonna rain, he's not gonna spray. And if it's gotta be, right now, we don't have to worry about the sixty-five degrees, but he'll be out there when it is the right time to be out there. So, thank you for the report. Alright, Mr. Turner?
A few things. Let's see, Danny Kiefer of the Knights of Columbus requests that they be allowed to, on September seventeenth, solicit at the intersections of Thirteenth and Mark, Ninth and Cherry and Fifth and Walnut. This is something that Knights of Columbus has done every year. It's helping people with intellectual disabilities that are unable to attend tonight, but in the past, they've asked for permission and we've accepted it. So, is there any issue with Knights of Columbus?
I don't think so.
Okay. Just letting you know, not worrying. No one gets in trouble. Also, back to the asphalt millings. As Commissioner Meeks said, we went through the loads a lot quicker than we were hoping for. I'm requesting that we be allowed to buy twenty more loads at twenty thirty-five of the asphalt millings to finish up our projects. You know, they're good millings, from what I've been told, and they just didn't go as far as what we needed, but they are working for what we need. So, I need approval.
What's?
That, that's roughly about eight thousand, it's eight thousand and some dollar.
What's going on in your budget?
Is it, I don't know, yeah, for the, down for the wells?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, everything that we've been doing with the grindings is your department, so.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So, I need a motion.
Carry my money over here.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, do I get a motion? You want a second?
I'll second.
Alright, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, the same sign. Alright, so moved.
I don't know how you guys are spending all my money, man.
You guys come out of his budget?
Yeah.
Everything really does.
Yeah, labor too, shit too.
And also, touch base on the large brush piles. If you call up to City Hall if you think we may have forgot you, we'll get you on the list, but a lot of times on those, they just come back the next day when they have the correct equipment. So, like she said, don't get upset, we're not just passing it up, just give them time to work with you. And outside of that, if anyone wants to drive for the senior citizens home about twenty hours a week, we need a driver and then a dishwasher. So, that's fifteen hours a week. So, that is all I have.
Alright, to add to your report on the brush, people need to make sure that they're the ones cutting the trees. If they hire somebody to cut those trees, that is the responsibility of the contractor to get rid of said brush. It is not to be put out on the side of the roads for the city, that is not what the service is meant for, so. Alright, thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Walder?
Uh, no reports made.
Mr. Getcham?
I want to give you a little bit of updates. I spoke with Mr. Guy's wife today, one thirty-one West Second Street, that demo that you guys have already approved and gone through. He's gonna start on that Tuesday, July the twentieth. I asked him about the Snap-on property, and he said we're still three weeks out on it. I spoke with Mr. Winston concerning the rope that we've already approved for him to do down in six oh two. He's gonna start on it tomorrow. We've been doing interior painting there at six oh two, he said. We've got some drywall work that needs done, but we wanted to wait till that rope was done, so we can get it up again. I'm gonna get with Heat Reed tomorrow, and we're gonna get the golf course in the city park parking lot areas stripped off at least as much as we can. By Wednesday, I think it's supposed to be one of the better days and we'll get started on it then. And I've got a question for three, twelve thirty-one Bank, that's one of those that we went through, where are we at on that?
Yeah, so Mike took me around to a bunch of different possible properties with violations. And so we sent out about oh thirty or so violation letters, different properties. Got some response from, from a few of them that have resolved themselves, but there's a few, twelve thirty-one North Bank and being one of them, we're gonna pursue for demolition through the court process, so that will be starting soon.
It's been in bad shape for a couple of years, I think, at least, so.
Yeah, just driving by, you can tell, fits the criteria. On the Snap-on property, we've received a couple of phone calls up here at City Hall asking to go on the property to cut the trees down for firewood. And with all the pits and the debris and the steel laying around, we do not want anybody on the property cutting trees down. Yeah, there's rebar sticking up out of the ground, it's, it's not a safe area to be in. If, if it was, we wouldn't have a problem, but with the condition of the property right now, it is best that we just allow Jeff Guy's White to come in there and level it out and remove all the trees. So, we appreciate the thought, but for liability issues, we just need to have a post-it no trespassing at this point until it's done and over with, so. Alright, Mr. Easter?
The only thing I might add, Mayor, is to go along with Mr. Meeks's report, we were originally supposed to start milling today. There was areas that were marked on Park Road, College Drive and Marlberry Street, but it got postponed and moved back to Wednesday. And I would like to remind the residents and inform the residents that that will be starting on Wednesday, so be patient. Because at times, we will probably have lanes shut down if not the whole width of the road coming up and milling all those spots. And it will probably be more than, I'm gonna suspect more than a one-day job to get all that load done. So, we'll probably be starting out in Park Road area in the middle of town and finishing up down on South Mulberry. Would be my speculation on that.
Well, we need flaggers there, David, or we just gonna have Mike following behind him?
Well. Mike had said he was gonna use his team. Mike will be there, I will have an extra truck there as well, and probably somebody to help direct traffic.
Okay.
And watch out.
They just be, just tell the public to be careful because we don't want to get somebody injured over doing something like that, so take your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Easter. Chief McWilliams?
Thank you. Just briefly, the drone is now operational, it's been registered. That was something that started prior to my role as chief. We did get that completed, and it is, we have the operator, Paris Pennington, who actually flew these in the, in the Army. So, we've got an experienced operator, he's got it registered with the FAA. To put it into context, what it actually breaks the table, you know, about a month ago, we had the subject that fled from the officers up in the northern part of the county, and there was easily a two-hour response time on waiting for an airplane to come from Springfield, the state police. Appreciate their assistance, but obviously, it's not a quick response because of their location. We could have had the drone with the thermal imaging in the air in minutes as opposed to hours. And we've got about an hour and a half of flight time with what we purchased. Thermal imaging is outstanding, fire department can use it. They just have to contact Officer Pennington if they need it for a structure fire. And just wanted to let you guys know that. And the other thing, I just want everyone to realize how much the officers, in this case, have volunteered their time. I've been approached a few different times for some, for assistance, Lunchwagon, perfect example. Mayor Judge asked for some assistance on the Fourth of July. These, these individuals are stepping up, volunteering their time, and in an era when law enforcement is not necessarily appreciated, these people are going above and beyond on their own time to do these things. For example, Lunchwagon called us on Friday, said, hey, we're reporting somebody on Monday, and I think on Friday or something this week. We need two people on Monday and one person on Friday or what have you. And one of the officers and their spouse came out and spent three hours today on their own time to do that. That's just a couple of examples of how fortunate we are to have these individuals here that are willing to step up. They also get out and check your doors, make sure the buildings are locked up, and if not, we contact the property owners. There's a lot of little things going on here that we don't realize, and just wanted to take a moment to thank them for what they do for us.
Yep, thank you. Yes, our fire department and our police force have outstanding individuals. When Chief McWilliams and Officer Wall and Officer Hopper were out at the Rotary Corn Day shucking corn, how many crates of corn did you guys do at your table alone?
Twenty.
Twenty crates. So, they, they had a little shucking contest. Back on the drone situation, when it's needed by fire or by another mutual aid group that we work with, Officer Pennington will be the one that will be responding with it. He is the only certified one within the city to use that drone. So, it was very expensive and do not want it to get broke. So, I was speaking with an officer down in Evansville over the weekend, and they had a high-speed chase down there this weekend, and they were able to find the person in the cornfield with the drone. Once they set the dog out and they sent the drone up, the suspect saw the drone flashing and then heard the dog coming and then gave up very fast. So, it will be very useful, so. Anyways, new business, consent agenda. I need a motion to pay all bills proper, bearing proper signature, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. So moved. Anything else to address this evening?
New business?
Oh, okay, sorry. John?
Hi.
Clancy, how are you doing?
I have two things. Hi, I'm John Clancy here, running the Little Bucubark Center. I have two things, this might not be appropriate, but we're gonna do an arts festival. but we're gonna do an arts festival and a block party in October, a weekend in October. We're gonna call it the Little Egypt Arts Festival. Leaves get it, leaves coming down.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I booked persons park right here, but then I was told that now I need insurance.
Yes.
Who do I speak to about that?
Be city manager.
Can I help you?
Do what? Yes.
For insurance?
Based, no, you don't talk to me about the insurance. You need to get insurance, and then they will.
From like Michael Harris?
Yeah, yeah, and he, yeah, and he fax everything. Yeah, he'll take care of it.
Beautiful. All right. I want you all to come. Something else. It's gonna be locally based, local artists, because you guys have no idea how talented this town is. I mean, my lord. Music, theater, visual arts, it's amazing. So we're gonna do a three-day festival. Again, totally local, locally based, and it's gonna be something else. And I really, I mean, come on. We've been talking about sewers and this is good stuff, this is fun stuff, this is art. Good. Now, the second thing, though, is a question for all y'all. The city budget's a public document, correct?
Yes.
How do I get a copy of that?
Talk to him.
Can I get a copy of that?
Hold on.
Email it to me?
It's on the city website.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
It's on the city website.
Oh, my God.
Because it seems to me, you guys have been throwing a lot of money around tonight. Lot of money. And it seems to me that, no offense, chief, we spend a lot of money on police officers. And, 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 and new cars, like that weird black car you guys got zipping around now, very weird. You know what I'm talking about? You know what I'm talking about? You guys chief police? It's very strange. It's very strange.
It's not our department.
It's like black, and it barely says Mount Carmel, but it kind of drifts away. It looks like a gangster car.
I saw something like that. I don't.
What I would like is to figure out how to fix the sidewalks on market.
We have a grant that's pending.
Pending?
Yes, it's waiting.
I have friends who are in walkers and wheelchairs, and they can't walk. The middle of our town is disastrous. It looks like Beirut, y'all. It's, it's embarrassing. The middle of our town, from Fifth Street to Ninth Street.
Yep.
Is, certainly on that side of the street, it's disastrous.
Three-quarters of a million dollars to fix that area.
Let's fix it, man.
Don't have the money.
We have forty-seven thousand dollars to throw at something else.
That goes out of, that's out of a different fund that's for that, though.
How many you got money in your budget?
Ten thousand.
Yeah, but you don't understand, the money that we have, like in the motor fuel tax, it specifies by the state where that money can be spent. It can't be spent on sidewalks. It has to be spent on roads, and that just, that's designated roads. That's not every road in town.
So why don't we raise money? Why don't we do something, man?
Get at it.
It's embarrassing.
Maybe your art festival will help us out.
We have a, we've applied four times for what's called Streetscape, John. It's called Streetscape. It's for all new sidewalks from Third all the way down to Ninth.
Beautiful.
And the state of Illinois says our sidewalks aren't bad enough to qualify.
Walk them.
Kind of like our roads.
You and I see the same thing. State of Illinois sees something totally different. And so we've, we have submitted again for the fourth time to get these sidewalks fixed. The, right now, to get it from Third to Ninth is one point two million dollars.
Okay.
And like Commissioner Ike Meyer said, we have a working capital. All the money the city has
Right.
is one point seven.
Right.
So you can't spend the one point two on the sidewalks, because we would essentially shut down, because we have bills pending for that one point seven.
But, but your honor, we all know, these are just numbers, and, and a budget is a moral document.
I'm not talking budget.
It's a moral document. Where you put your money is what you believe in. And if we're putting money in, again, no offense to you, if we're putting money in policing and we're not putting money in basic infrastructure, then we're telling this town that what's more important is the cops. What's less important is the.
No, I disagree. I think it's.
I'm gonna disagree.
It's the safety of the citizens.
It's a public safety issue.
It's about public safety. It's not about the cops. I love these guys.
I do too, man.
Okay, so I don't know what car you're talking about.
It's not a department vehicle.
Right.
What the hell is it, man? Because it scares me. It scares me. I can't dictate what someone decides to drive no more than I can.
You take these guys out of town.
There's a horse that's got zombie on it. They're zombie hunters and stuff like that. As far as infrastructure, this council has spent more on infrastructure than councils for a very long time.
Million dollars on infrastructure alone.
Right, I understand.
The department, the council, but the department.
As far as sidewalks, we're working on them. We, we want nothing more than to replace sidewalks. It's just the cost.
I hear, I hear. And, and I can go onto the website and just get the budget?
Yep.
Yeah.
Cool. And, and y'all are gonna come to my festival?
Sure, yeah. I'll come up there. I'll come up there.
Sure.
I think it's one, just one basic comment here, you know, this council is very, finds infrastructure very important, but we also find public safety very important, so our, we do invest in our police and fire. And, you know, when Chief McWilliams was talking, you know, one of the thoughts that came to my mind, a lot of, and I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think I can, you, you see a lot of councils that don't support their police departments and other people. This council, I believe, a hundred percent support for the police and fire, and they will always have that as long as this group's together.
You're starting.
And so we're gonna, they, they operate on pretty lean budget when you really look at it. I mean, you may not think at the total dollars, but it's, it's pretty lean, so. And you don't realize that till you sit here in this seat and you look at that necessarily, but.
But you also don't realize.
But, and I do, I mean, I've, I used to work uptown, and it's been that way for a long time.
Yet another, yet another, yet another police officer.
Well, you probably see a lot of the same one, but.
No, they're doing every time. All right, thank y'all.
Thank you. All right. Do we vote on consent agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
All right, nothing else?
I think we.
We're done.